Good evening and welcome to the Livonia City Council. The Honorable Scott Barr will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Barr. We'd like to welcome you to the, somebody has September 23rd, study session of the Livonia City Council. The October 7th study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,883rd regular meeting, which will be a voting meeting, and that will take place on October 24th, or 21st, excuse me. We have no council absences, and is there anyone wishing to make any announcements or introduce any groups in our audience tonight? Okay, if not, this is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken this evening. The council may, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or a city department for the report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will appear on the regular meeting of, again, Monday, October 21st of this year, where they will be officially voted on. If you'd like to participate tonight in our agenda, when your item is called, if you'd approach podium to my left or right and give us your name and address, then we will proceed. Council, it's the yellow agenda for this evening, and what we'll do is go to audience communication at this point. Anyone wishing to speak to the council in any manner that's not on the yellow sheet, would you approach podium to my left or right? Hearing and seeing no one, then we will move on to new business council. Item one is a request to approve the execution of a specialized services vehicle agreement between the Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation, known as SMART, and the City of Livonia. This is brought to us from the Department of Community Resources to accept two 2019 wheelchair lift equipment vehicles, which have been provided by the Federal Transmission Administration, FTA 5310, grant through SMART for the Livonia Community Transit Program. We have with us our Director, Linda McHan. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to ask SMART, to ask SMART, to ask council to accept the two vehicles from SMART. We applied in 2015 for an expansion vehicle, then again in 17 for a replacement, and both grants just came through now. No cost to the city.
Madam President.
Yes, please, go ahead.
I'll offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda. I certainly like the fact that there's no cost to the City of Livonia, and we're receiving great value for this program.
Absolutely, thank you. Any others? Okay, you do have an approving. I'll go to the audience and see if anyone wants to speak to this, item one. If not, you have an approving resolution. Thank you for coming in, and thank you for all the good work you do, too. All righty, number two is a request for authorization to purchase one replacement Mark patrol vehicle utilizing State of Michigan and Counties of Oakland and Macomb Counties Consortium bid pricing. It's brought to us from the police. Good evening, Chief K.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. This item before you is requesting your authorization to purchase a replacement vehicle that was involved in a motor vehicle accident, and as a result of that crash was determined by our insurance carrier to be a total loss. We are being reimbursed by our insurance carrier in the amount of $16,000, the balance of which, we do have funds available to purchase this replacement vehicle. With your approval, we will purchase the vehicle utilizing the various consortiums. We participate with three bid purchasing consortiums, the State of Michigan Counties of Oakland and County of Macomb, and we will be utilizing, again with your approval, the Oakland County bid with Burger Chevrolet in Grand Rapids to purchase the vehicle in the amount indicated in the letter of $36,463.
Thank you, Chief. Council, comments, direction?
Madam Chair, I'm happy to offer the approving resolution on consent if there's no objection.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman White has offered. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing no one. You have an approving on consent, Chief.
Thank you.
Certainly. Item three is a request for authorization to purchase two 200 Microsoft Office Pro Plus 2019 licenses utilizing the State of Michigan contract pricing. This is brought to us from the Division of Police. Chief.
Madam President, members of council, this item, again, is requesting your authorization and approval to waive the sealed bid process and purchase the Microsoft Office Pro licenses as indicated in the letter. Initially, this was a project that we had identified for 2000, our next budget year, 2020, due to our open positions and available capital. With that, we have the funding available to do that this year, thus saving the purchase originally scheduled for next year. Again, this is utilizing a bid process that was awarded to CWG, CWG in Chicago, Illinois. They have been a provider of this, of computers and software for us and the city over the years. Funds are now budgeted in the account to make this purchase in the amount of $78,944.
Thank you very much. Council, your comments, direction?
Madam President.
Yes, please, Councilwoman McIntyre.
I'd be happy to offer the approving resolution for this. Obviously, we need to replace this as the current contracts are no longer, they're out of warranty. I'm sorry that we have funding available due to office shortages, but glad that we can apply the funds to other things that need to be done at the police department. We know how hard you and the rest of the team are working to fill those vacancies, so thanks, Chief.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no, none, was that an approving on consent?
Yes, I'm sorry, I neglected to say that.
Certainly, that's all right.
Thank you, council.
If there are no objections. No objections to approving on consent, I don't hear, so approving on consent.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman McIntyre, yes, thank you. Okay, council, we're on item four, a request to approve proposed rates for the dog park at Bicentennial Park. This is brought to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation. Recreation, recreation.
Sorry.
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. We are asking for one change to our current dog park user fees. Currently, we charge $30 for the first dog. There's no advantage or incentive to people to reuse their fobs. We would like to give them a small financial incentive by only charging $20 for dogs that are renewing and utilizing their existing key fob. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Certainly. Counsel?
Madam President.
Certainly, go right ahead.
So what's the savings, what's the dollar savings?
For us, it...
No, for the people who choose to renew.
It's $10 savings.
Oh, so it works out pretty well for them.
Well, cutting the fee if you return by 33 percent, so that's always nice to lower fees.
Just out of curiosity, what do the fobs cost us, a buck?
No, oh, no. They cost us, we're probably in the $5 to $6 range, depending on how many.
That's fair. I appreciate you being proactive. I'll offer an approving for consent if there are no objections, but I see, Ms. McIntyre without a speech?
Yes, go right ahead.
Mr. Davis, as you know, we have canine issues that come up, come to council from time to time about not the dog park, but, you know, dogs not being on leashes, people not picking up after their dogs. What have our experiences been at the dog park relative to, you know, good behavior and bad behavior, not by the dogs, but by the owners, because the dogs?
Yeah, most of the time, the dogs are pretty well behaved. It's the owners that we have more problems with.
But, you know, that's what I was, I was kind of trying to clarify that, but thank you for, thank you as always for helping me out there. But as far as, you know, people being compliant with picking up after their dogs and following the rules of the dog park, what's your general sense?
I think most of the people follow the rules. I mean, obviously, it's self-police there. We ask people to pick up after their own animals. You know, we're not out there monitoring it. I don't get very many complaints. We do occasionally, and we try to deal with those on a case-by-case basis, but I think overall, when you're looking at, I think this year, we have about 550 registered dogs at the park. We get very few issues there. Now that I said that, I'm sure we'll see a...
We've just tempted faith. But the reason I ask, I don't recall, you know, I recall every year, you know, we get several council, get several, at least several emails or calls, right, about people, various canine issues around the city, and I don't recall ever getting a call or an email about issues at the dog park, so I just wanted to...
That's good.
See what your sense was.
That means I've probably taken care of it before it's reached council, more than likely.
There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome. Go right ahead.
Just, I recall seeing a video with a gentleman walking around picking up the manor out there. I think it was at the State of the City a couple of years ago, so maybe he's doing his job well.
Madam President.
Yes, please, go ahead.
You mentioned the 550 licenses, registrations, Ted. Do you recall off the top of your head how that compares with what we were anticipating? I don't remember what we were expecting.
Well, the first year, we had just over 800. Obviously, we're not done this year, so we might see, I would imagine we'll see, you know, approximately 100 more registrations, but we're down a little bit from last year. We're still higher than we ever budgeted for. We were thinking, first couple of years, we'd see 300 to 400 registrations, so we're well above that.
I will say, I'm living near there, and I will go play tennis with my kids there, and it's really fun to see the sense of community that's out there. Every time I'm out there in an evening, it's, there's a lot of people, a lot. I mean, it's, I'm not talking 100, but, you know, five to seven people consistently, and there seems to be a lot of camaraderie even among the dog owners, so I think it's been a really positive thing for our community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? And Mr. Davis did a terrific job the other night for the movie wall and all the kinds of things your committee and yourself did. Thank you again.
Thank you.
From all of us and all of our citizens, just really appreciated that, thank you.
I would remind council president that the last time I was at a podium, I did receive a round of applause.
Oh.
Just not going to expect that right now, so...
Probably not, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but thank you so much for all your efforts. Appreciate it. All right.
Sorry.
Item five, then, if there's no other comments from Mr. Davis, is a request to increase athletic fees at the archery pass fees and new rental fees. This is brought to us from the Department of Parks and Rec. And with fee charges are going to go into effect January 1 of 2020, then, correct, sir?
Correct.
Yes. If approved.
If approved. Thank you, council president. Again, Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. We're asking for $5 across-the-board fee increases for T-ball and coach pitch for open and late registration. We're also asking for $5 archery season pass increases, and then a new fee for tennis court and pickleball court rental. Previously, we've never, we have rented tennis courts when asked, but we've always charged a field fee and not a dedicated. We haven't had a tennis court or now a pickleball court fee, so. The last time we've asked for fee increases for T-ball and coach pitches, council can see, was 11 years ago, and the last time we asked for archery season pass increases was 16 years ago, so it's been a while, and we've tried to be judicious in these. These are small increases that we think are warranted. I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Certainly. Council Vice President Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, trying to understand, and again, it's a small price, I'm not trying to give you a hard time or anything like that, but what, what is the true cost of the T-ball and coach pitch program to the City of Livonia? And I ask that just because, to be honest with you, I've been, you know, at least knee-deep in this for the last three summers, and it seems like it kind of, it kind of runs itself completely without Parks and Rec, other than scheduling and providing equipment. In all seriousness, there's not a whole lot of interaction or expectation that Parks and Rec really does a whole lot there, and I would hate to, I would hate for us to be waiving, or excuse me, raising a fee, just for the sake of raising a fee. Is the program running a negative, or is it...
It's slightly negative when you factor in, of course, I mean, Councilman Jolly, when you say, "We really don't do anything other than take all the registrations, make all the schedules, assign all the fields, I mean, you know, market the program."
It's in no way a critique of your people, but I mean, as myself and the other parents are out there, and the other people are coaching and stuff like that, there is no interaction on a game-to-game basis from Parks and Rec. That's the point I'm trying to get across, so don't, don't try and say I'm being negative about your people, because I'm not. I'm curious, are we running a negative? And you said we are slightly negative.
I think we are when you factor in field costs. Obviously, that plays in with DPW as well, but, yeah, I think we are running at slight negative for the program, and not that it's, and if council was to not approve this, we would still offer the program. I mean, it wouldn't stop us from doing anything, we wouldn't cut anything. You know, your kids would still have the same purple hats and t-shirts that they, was your color purple this year?
I've had all the colors.
Okay.
I got a whole collection.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, because you are an excellent steward of our recreation department, you are, and you've done proactive things, you've added new programs, but it seems that when we do raise prices, the justification, number one, is that we haven't raised them in a while.
Mm-hmm.
And in this circumstance, I'll offer an approving, but I'll ask that that be put on the regular, and I would like to see the numbers, if you can give some kind of indication of where the program is, and it may be perfectly justifiable, and I expect it will be...
Are you looking for just T-ball, coach pitch numbers?
Yeah, just because, yeah, I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Certainly. Councilwoman McHan and then Councilwoman McIntyre.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Davis, can you address the justification for the tennis courts, adding a fee to that, and then the pickleball? Pickleball, I know, is the hot new thing.
Yes.
But how are you going to implement a fee structure into that?
I don't know if I'm understanding the question, Councilwoman McHan. I mean, we have a fee structure existing for field rentals.
Okay.
I mean, this would be no different than a field rental, really. We're just, we're permitting out a certain location, a certain court, just as we do a ball field, whether it's bicentennial...
Just for field, I thought you were just doing this on a regular basis for the tennis courts and the...
No.
Okay, that makes a little more sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McIntyre.
You know, the point's well taken, that we don't want to increase fees arbitrarily just to increase revenue, but I can certainly understand that the costs associated with providing administrative work, taking care of the fields, maintenance, all those things have gone up considerably since the last time we raised rates, and administration, you know, costs money, so I don't object at all to asking for the numbers, but to me, it certainly seems reasonable and in line with the costs that the city has incurred related to those items that we do provide for the, for the T-ball and coach pitch, so thank you.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Barr.
I'll just throw one more thought into this discussion. All the points that may have been legitimate, but by the same token, I would argue residents' rates through their property taxes have gone up significantly, too, and a lot of these things that we're talking about are sunk costs for the parks of recreation, so I appreciate Councilman Jolly's request, and I'd even throw the archery piece into that, too. I would just like to better understand those cost structures, and I know we're talking $5 or whatever it is, but, but people are paying for these through their tax dollars, and if the only reason is we haven't done it in a long time, I'd like to see some further justification for that, so thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Barr. Is there any others? Hearing and seeing no one, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one from the audience, we have an approving on the regular.
With the, just for clarification, T-ball and coach pitch numbers and archery numbers, basically, you want to see a profit and loss statement, correct?
Yes, sir.
All fees associated with it.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All righty, council, we're on item six, is a request for an additional appropriation and expenditure brought to us from the Engineering Division. Mr. Zalinsik.
Ladies and gentlemen, President, city council members, as you're aware, we previously approved Whispering Willows Golf Course improvements. That started the day out there with NAGO paving. We wanted to take advantage of their proximity of being on site to take some additional millions that are being from that parking lot to go across the street to Greenmead. Couple of years ago, we did some parking lot improvements in the, in that area. We're looking to do just a little parking area adjacent to that and to help out for future events, and so we're looking for your assistance to approve additional contract amount of $100,000 for that project, to take advantage of their work being in that area, and if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer those. We are looking for both areas to be completed by the end of October.
Okay. Comments, council, direction?
Madam President.
Certainly, go ahead, right ahead, Councilwoman McHan.
Thank you. We'll take advantage of the generosity of NAGO paving. It helps that they're in the neighborhood and they're offering their services. Makes it efficient for them as well, and this is just added value to Greenmead, so I'll be happy to offer approving resolution for the consent agenda if there's no objection.
Thank you, Councilman. Any others? Hearing and seeing none, anyone from the audience? Hearing and... Come on down. There you go.
Hello.
Hi.
Ilynn McDonald, 36099, Brookview. I just have a question in reference to this change in scope, and I don't disagree that it's always nice to add on to Greenmead. I think it's a wonderful thing, but being that this is a $100,000 change without bidding, is that something that the city should be doing in reference to that? There's, the original bid was for $177,000. We're adding on almost, well, over a third, so shouldn't that be going out to bid, because it's a change in scope project?
Okay. Counsel, or, Ted?
Madam President, I just want, you know, we took the unit prices from the 19A project, plugged them into the quantities that were to be utilized for that, so there's no advantage to go out for bids. As you know, we bid out several projects through NAGO this whole year. They came to be the lowest over the, over the five, four or five contracts we bid out with those Hubbard Road Bike Path, Hubbard Road Children's Improvements, the 19A project, and recently with the Whispering Willows, so we are using the existing contract unit prices, we're just, there's only like several different quantities, or several different line items with specific quantities, particularly to this project itself, so we are getting the best price we can, as we always try, for the city council and for the taxpayers. Thank you.
But what about state purchasing laws? How's that impacted?
How's what? I'm sorry.
State purchasing laws? You know, because you're, you're...
That's okay.
No, that's okay.
State purchasing laws is what you said, right?
Well...
Madam President, this is actually a capital improvement project, so it comes from our specified budgeted funds from 401, which is, again, a capital improvement, so we have money set aside for, for stuff around City Hall and things of that nature, so again, we try to take advantage of the best prices that we had previously bid and use the existing, you know, line items in that contract for the quantities that were specified for this particular project. And then to have the millions be touched again to redo it would cost us more money in the long run, so again, it's all about, again, NAGO taking advantage of the work in the area and getting the best bang for a buck for this, this area. Thank you.
Okay. I'll see what I can find, and then I'll be back.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, we have an approving, and...
I believe Mr. McHan offered consent.
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, you're all set. Council, we are on item seven. This is a request to amend a site plan petition. Mr. Newman Smith, and this is petition for St. Mike's Parish requesting to amend the site plan and conditions previously approved by the city council on April 22nd for the addition, for the additional and renovation to the church building located in the southwest quarter of Hubbard and Plymouth Roads in the northwest quarter of Section 34. Councilwoman...
Yeah, after we're done with this, I'd just like to return to item number six, just to take a...
Oh, okay. Excuse me. Can we do this first, or do you want to go now?
No, I mean, I mean, I would like to, in light of the comments that were raised by a member of, a citizen of Livonia, I would request that we put this on the regular agenda instead of the consent agenda. That way, if anyone has new information that they'd like to bring back to us, they're welcome to do so at the next meeting.
Anyone else? Yep. Councilwoman McHan, you got a problem with that at all?
It's her right to offer that resolution.
Okay. All right, so we have two resolutions, then, right?
It's not a resolution.
No, we don't vote here.
No, I know.
But usually, I thought...
Asking it to put on the regular.
Yeah.
We wanted to, but do you want it on the regular or just consent? I'm just trying to get directions.
She's asking for it to be on the regular.
Yes, I'm asking for it to be on the regular.
All right.
Sense of concern was raised by...
Okay, so we're going to go to the regular, Madam President.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty. Sorry for the delay.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Turmin, did you want to go first on this?
I'll just preface this item by saying that, reminding the council that it was in March of this year that you approved changes to St. Michael's Parish. The largest, the most significant change, and the one that we're here to discuss this evening in terms of the revisions, the, there was a, an addition, about 3,000 square feet to the front of the building, the north expedition, which, as you can see from this rendering, this is what was approved, and the architects and the parish are here this evening to discuss certain changes that they would like to make to the design that would necessitate an amendment to the, to the approved site plan, so with that, I'll just allow them to make their presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Turmin. Any questions for Ms. Turmin before I go to the petitioner? Go right ahead, your name and address, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Alexis Paulsonelli from Newman Smith Architecture. Address is 400 Galleria Office Center, Suite 555, Southfield. We're here today just because, due to some financial constraints from the parish and the estimates that came in from the contractor, it was significantly over budget, so the parish asked us to come up with some alternative design options to help bring the project within the proposed budget, and this is an image showing the changes provided that helped bring the project within scope.
Okay. Do you want to go over those changes a little bit?
I can, sure. So there was a letter sent to the city council dated September 27th that lists those changes, and I'll just list them off here. The roof line at the stepped portion has been simplified upon the east facade. The stained glass has been removed from the east facade. The canopy has been removed over the east entrance. The tower at the main entry has been lowered to a height of 25 feet. The plaza at, to the south of the main entry has been removed. The planters attached to the north and south side of the building will remain as they exist today, with just minor repairs and repairs of the sills, and there shall be four light poles along Hubbard in lieu of the mix of pole bollards and other high lighting features.
Thank you. Can I just ask you about the color? This going around the building, it shows kind of an orange color in the picture there, it shows red, is there...
It is a copper color. I do have a sample board with me, but the samples and the exterior materials are remaining as previously presented, so everything should remain the same. Really, what's changed is the height of the tower, a simplified roof structure.
Sounds like it.
Yeah, and just the removal of the plaza. You know, the parish hopes to maybe do that in the future, but due to the financial constraints, they're hoping to proceed with the project as is and do more work in the future.
Perfect, thank you. Council, your direction, your comments.
Madam President.
Yes, go right ahead, the Vice President Jolly.
So I'll say just, in terms of the work or the addition to the church, although it's aesthetically different, and I'll let others comment on the aesthetics of the outside, the real improvement is the addition of the space, right? My own parish, St. Clet, did something similar to the vestibule. They made the parish significantly more comfortable going in and out into host functions, you know, and tables and stuff like that after mass, so I think the most important thing that's getting done here is still the same, so aesthetically, it's different. I'll let others comment on that, but I'm glad to see you're still doing the project. Thank you.
Anyone else?[1719.51]